Ona rambu kantipul na nyala ba uko temi ya ona rumakosi umu ye ilunga de pshanta edo ose ilena banu liya uzo ngu itboko bo na kapa yispe ye tunamzati This is a public hearing. Coming out of this process, I tell you, we will launch a national process to also feel the same as in that three ona mte edo about who will pass this parliament in last year, the second level decision the process second level decision, it is ending there, so take good tea. They should be consulting with provinces for the future impact in my concurrents and struggle. There is both the national assembly and the central council of provinces. As part of that process were obliged to have a public hearing as our provincial legislator as we having these hearings, as the cave residence the many years of all ninety provinces across the country are having the same process. It might be different day, but all nine because emphasize this point. Because as well connected equally, there are even others, I'm told, who joined up about this and other provinces. There are public hearings taking place in your own respective provinces, which you can join physically and make your input on those public hearings on the methods and terms. We are here to engage on the two bill, it's the near corner, about the way to Bagadi Kanbat, they through one. The province was planned to have five public hearings. This is the second public hearing. Where do I know the fifteenth of March? At Uku Kamalake. This is the second one, thirty third of March, it's with the Mukumba. The third one will follow on the fourth of April in things like why that to the auditorium. Fortunately, it is not the one to spend time with us, so we will be able to care for that. The next one will be on the sixth of April, it's Ruland District at Tumbay Council Hall. And the last one will be on the eleventh of April, Emma Juba District, Osizwe Community Hall. While we will team from the international department and the provincial legislature, medical advisors will take us through the field, I will introduce them. Then they'll come over to make the presentation. You will notice issues where you might have questions of clarity or want to have inputs. Nobody who belongs along wants that turn with their presentations. But also as different organizations or individuals, they will write, make written submissions in relation to the field. We'll announce the email address at the end of the session where you can make those written submissions. Where they can be considered by the national portfolio committees of both the N C O P and the national assembly beyond ourselves as a province who are having this hearing, so that when you combine the report, your input would be there across all of these levels and all of the sectors. When the province, you know, voice came inside there would come over from medical, secondary legislature, who talamanina fa, from the island. You know, country, you know, eh, you go at the I hope, if pronoun that rising, they look for the laio la from the bank of trade and interest competition league card. You know, give homo disease, then visa for the national police and the exclamation of the chief director. You know, they will have to say, for the acting chief director part of the delegation. So if one of them, they la, they must, they must be a member, they must be by, by faith, they get. If there are other colleagues of other line funding departments, so they'll advise, introduce the either, she never laugh upon, but we stop corners over, because when we have this session, but given by invite, especially our colleague from Athen卡 if you can have a corner, either from the municipality or from the provincial department. So now wasting time, so we don't wait inside there, so that family will take us through on the bill and then, so now, so I want to notice issues. Then we take them, move back from them, so in money time, they move.
And eh and then the, the best of see by, who do I get the color of my head, not a question, it's not a a comment rather, but with the suggestion in the proceedings, eh, for the sake, well, at the best interest of smooth and trouble free proceedings. Inasmuch as it is very important that we engage on deals today, but however, at the best interest of a trouble free proceedings, we see it is that before we engage on deals, we go, there is a matter of high importance that we can never eh eh ignore or rather, just eh pass by or bypass the mere, no matter fact, that tomorrow, there is a secret event that we as agents, we weren't informed about, that we as investors, not, we're not informed, we don't understand that. We are in the peripheries, we remain there in the peripheries, we don't know what's happening about that secret event and we as agents, we do, we, we're not part of the planning, even today, even that, that is tomorrow, but even today, we don't know when performing and when not performing, that, that artist was supposed to perform, to perform there, are hidden from us. Again, the very same secret event is planned by government, the government intends to be eh eh event organizer, of which is highly nonsensical ourselves, so now, our suggestion eh eh for smooth and trouble free eh eh proceeds, to suggest that it was, the matter of deals proceed, but at one o'clock, can the minister please come and address us regarding the secret event for sweet and smooth proceedings. The, the matter can please proceed, but at one o'clock, can we please have the minister to come and address us? If that, that doesn't happen, while saying something is going to happen, but however, if she continues portraying arrogance towards ourselves, we can also meet her arrogance, our arrogance, because it seems, it seems as if it's the only language she understands.
Eh, the, 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 we're not aware of, of the event you're referring to. I, I think we must clarify who mainly has got three arms of government. You've got the legislature, which is ourselves, as members of people, provincial legislature eh coming across, you've already political parties who are part of the portfolio committee. Then you have the executive led by the premier and the emissaries, who I'm assuming you're referring to, all the metas we are referring to. Then you may take to the share, Baba Uzo, Naba Baby, Namajat, African, everything yet. So the session we're having today is a session of legislative and even the others that created the public hearing in regard to the police. There are issues we agree and we acknowledge. Amahatis, they are now with regard to Athen卡, this is not something new. Nationally, they were even caught at in Zaba corner, they were even sitting in the national ass country. Eh, there were a number of engagements took place. Hopefully nationally, after those engagements which took place, there was even a reshuffle of the cabinet nationally. So, I'm trying to outline the point, Yogo Ti. Beyond that, let me say also, again, Chief Whip had a session with Amahatis in the province fights. One, I think, two days back, and another one, I think, about two or three weeks back engaging on there as, as the chief whip of the legislature. And he made that commitment. Yambonu eh, she will call that, Yogo Ti. He will take it upon himself to arrange the meeting with the embassy of economic development and the embassy for Athen卡 in the province to engage with the leadership of the creative, because there are a number of issues they are unhappy about in regard to how their makers are being handled or not being handled. That's why even when I started here, I asked to call in economy, you know, Yambonu. But best one, I'm government, me and Baba, me that I'm a family, but they telling a family, so they, if you find a little pen, they emboss bawa, so they do what, eh, me yeah, emboss a China as the one who will name, they do that. So glalala, sipa the pants, you go, go my issues and we pass it through to the relevant authorities, because our line of authorities in a limitation, because one members of legislative who go to, which is the public hearing, they have a creative, we said that how understand the mte so, although trivial on the impact borna Baba, the input go, so that at the end of the day, when you pass the long bangata, the bar, call it, in the talaman, Baba, the crevice after which is the bank, and then that's part of the mte, so on our behalf without our authorization, any input on the better than will not be met as a reason, it will also, as I'm sitting down, the rest we check put within the respective department who is coming on this matter, hopefully by the time we conclude with the public hearing on the bill itself, we're able to outline, who called this, so I respect on the department in those matters. But let us be clear that the session for today was not for that purpose, but we tried to assist and protect that engagement between the creative and the department. So the number, the day, they have the public, Yambonu.
None that what yes, yes. San Bonani. San Bonani. Pindani. Ya me ngelela, we no can still, in calip, me ngelela, I'm going to show the best issue, the unton issue, sir. Pashoba, support for the community, the economic development and case that any legislature. Eh, me ngelene, so, 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 eh, even then, even ngelene, completely shout the ball. Eh, na bubonge, I understand also in our midst that we've got also, also with who are closer to the process of drafting and also place land with regards to this eh, two bills. That was ever me ngelena, of course, I will talk about sugar to the slide department of trade, industry, competition. Even then, me ngelena, I'm parat. Also, I'm feeling I'm glad, you know, that's a good time, glad, Yogi.
O balé gile, u buti gisikon, u buti ilé zozído, esis taulá, u buti zé passo u mte. Jéjé ova nji, u mte, u mte, o, zige etbélé, yu fale u buti nebu u buti beno wasélok. Eh, u mni gazi, u mla, o subé kona, da pa ni gwa u mte, noke sisi petla. U kumbulu u buti na, na, eh, subé kona, u kala zoné, konsele, u buti ama nyama kiso e. Na u baite si boarding music, eh, imkunu ya u mitano, imare gwele, da kala u manai class, da u zonkindaw, far soré zanunja. Ode startes ni ga pa ye, eh, aha be mchabéli, enga na lude. So ina ko duin nineteen ninety eight, u buti let, eh, konsele, eh, gove se eksebi shware, iné, eh, wapizongu ti, the music industry task team. U kizogu gele, u buti zé pígele, ya seke, zúzamá kuguti u na o, ma ha be mchabéli, eh, gua u buti gisébele. Ya o, a gua u buti ta komele, o, a, a subé kona tu la, na o, a zó gua u buti, a pokéle renoba. Woi woa na aha va ni gazi, gisébele, nungu to. O two thousand and two, eh, i paramele, ya zé noke, la passe sae ona i amendment, eh, copyright, la kadi process. Ova se nozol u buti process le, eh, u kala gua i kariya, ba u buti beno wasélok, de seki kilé shda kame, do u sale. Wa se obe se kaví, i ka ba, o, tu nga na gua, ba u buti beno, da no buti, eh, zuge na mazí, u buti fale u buti beno wasélok. Ta kona u buti beno sundá, u buti kona u buti beno seka. Pide butu tu nga ané u buti, eh, u kona na aba, aba i, sha i, fe. It is late, u buti kona, i, eh, negative, mesu u ba kona, i, kandio, no let's speak, to the charge. Kapishane siki, no rechayno, ilé la ma mizongu ti separation of powers. Eh, ilé reté, zé le da u buti, a fané u buti koni, ma, ya u buti beni, eh, and a man yé, yé u buti. So ilé na u buti kani, li buti sìkón, de gwa ke lo. O two thousand and eh, eh, six, u buti kona se passe, so, o, ova u prokoni kala u buti. Ma ya freida, abase koni, u buti, u buti kona ma regulations, a zó gua u buti, a regulate, or, alaule, iné la, eh, i, ya no lesé sisi, ama collecting society. A sebe da naayo, eh, o two thousand and six, u buti se wey, de o ma regulations. Eh, o, o two thousand and nine, after that, eh, o, u buti kona, u buti se kona u buti kona, o, u buti kona pa ma tuwa ma tigo, eh, no mungamele. Ne department, ilá kona, eh, uwa se, u, u buti kona, eh, ama study is, el, el, apresé, no, no, tanga no. U buti zá, u buti kázulu, no, eh, resolve, desi giga, eh, unakala, zí, kona, na faati, eh, wimale, yeso tri. Eh, o twenty ten, ya thola u buti, o twenty ten, u buti kona, u buti, u sungu, eh, tu, establish, a copyright review commission. Eh, in so soya, the reason why it was established, it's important to say that, it was to assess, ama konsele, apa, the collecting society model. To the distribution of royalties to musician and composer. So thola, nésé, ya gua na u te buti, eh, di u buti, eh, na kula, ama collecting society, a sebe da, da ma tigo ra kula. Eh, a ogu ibona ba da, aba kala, eh, imkunu, noke sisi, tamasongu laitad. U buti kona, a sebe, dena ba tu, na wé sisi, eh, a, a ba tu, esla u buti, ama composer. O da ba kona, el, el beni, a, mme me, so mele, gisébele, ya fe fané u buti ba pokéwe de la o ba. So ilé na u bua sungu, duan, o, o, na i kala, u li komishé, li, li komishé, ya sebi shwa, twenty ten. Eh, between twenty ten and twenty twelve, omya moga, department, lega trade industry, and competition. Ya komishé, na, a study to, to the world international property organization, to research, the benefits, coming from the copyright space industry in South Africa. Guava se u ba kona, u buti kani, o, o, twenty ten, eh, gwe, twenty twelve, duan, o, yo, the department, eh, ga vloki, ti ti ai. Ta kumbula u buti, between twenty ten and twenty fourteen, guava koni, kán káswa, aba kona, besa u kona na, no, wa, se da kona. U lelize, eh, la sao to africa, na kona ba tige kare, u buti, u kona ba tu, aba ta gisébele, ya o, seba ba poké, o da be gisébele. So u buti kumutu se rekonda, eh, u buti kumutu, o da, la, oknolé, u buti kona ba. Besuwa agé na, be taiswa, na ma, eh, na ma sisi, ya be taiswa, a u koko deyo, emka kui. Eh, yo na kafele, ya ba kona, eh, eh, ibizongu ti, agi paris, maltsimida kame, eh, eh, i kona, kundo zonke, ipundazo, ipundazo e ni, sen kumbula ra. Eh, o ya na, twenty twelve, uwa se u ba kona, i formalization, eh, eh, ya ba kona, il sisi. Eh, eh, aló, duan, eh, u buti, i gua u buti, iné, ama sigo, ama tigo e. In twenty thirteen, the department, eh, published a draft national international property police. Which included a statement of copyright amendment. Eh, i polisi, eh, regi draft, ilé, ya ki fong, twenty thirteen, u buti ba ba komé. Eh, ga lemétos, zé zige lésé skuma na. O twenty fourteen, eh, the department, ya komishé, na, o, ya kama wa noche, ruwé siki, is a regulatory impact assessment start, wa, we, nésé start to. Eh, o twenty seventeen, eh, the performance protection, eh, and the copyright amendment bill, ya, ya intro to, so, i paramele, zá zé zonke. After see, introduce series, wey duama processing, eh, u buti, u gua u buti, a ba tu, eh, maybe the more. Wey duama papeteri, on those two bills. Jéjé ova nji, la, la, se, zela, na, obe se spigile, o da, alu ba yu u buti, ama papeteri, zé, zé wa fusi, u buti beni, eh, zá zé zonke. Eh, in be, ama be la wa, asia, fa wa, ma konsele, a sebi shwa, i, i, national paramele. Twenty eighteen, eh, u ba kona, eh, u buti kona, eh, that is a committee on copyright and copyrights, eh, it probably is a basis of the treaties. Eh, guava mko, u buti, kona u buti, si kala mbi sege, i, vumele, zangamagzo, ngamagzo, beni, si gène zonke. Eh, si i ka, nji o ba, zé nozol u buti, kunézi, i, vumele, zangamagzo, ngamagzo, beni, si gène zonke. Igele, eh, gisébele, ya o, da, ama tigo, gisébele, ya ba, nji o ba, na, ama tigo, ya gušo di, u buti, kundi ma, ya kona, kiti sisi, ina, ya ama tigo. Naayo, i kuwa, kuwa ne ga di mi, zé nozol u buti, se skuma naayo, ama be, samo, ama konsele, ayé, kweza, no, u buti. Eh, u fané u buti, na ba ta ba drafta, o, no buti beni, yombe faga, u buti zó, bê. A, a knolé, o, a, a muge, no, u buti, na u ba ba, ama tigo, o da, ba ya kuwa, kuwa ana fa ga. O ba, zé nozol u ba, aba kuli, zé nozol u ba, aba, 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 aba balbe, eh, wáti. Zé nozol u ba, aba balbe, eh, kolo, na wí bo na ma xí kolo, zole, o ma, na be bukla. Eh, se zole, eh, ama, dabava dala, eh, chilki mla, yé, seka na. Eh, manégi na, ama tigo, se ya thola noko, ilá kó, kundo zol u buti, kube ne kala u buti. Eh, ama be la wa, na da o, be gilé, o, ke lo. O five, fifteen, twenty eighteen, national assembly, horses, eh, ya ba u buti, u ba kona u buti, eh, na ya, eh, iya, adopta, ne mítos, iné beni. On the twenty eighth, march twenty nineteen, the performance protection and the copyright, were adopted by the national council. Ayé, fe da na, u buti ge, ya adopte national assembly, afí le puté, adopte na national council of province. U ba le mi le, ne sa, u buti ge, o ba o, o, se ya thola u buti, eh, after se wey, zé le, lolo se. Eh, o ba, umte, o, o kala, u buti section seventy five. Section seventy five of the constitution provides that, these are ordinary deals, which are not normal, eh, in normal, eh, processes, set to provinces. But they are only remaining in the national because, those are ordinary deals which have not affected, ama provinces. And have been called section seventy five, in that no because. Da kona se ya thola u buti ge, o kala, the process, the mítos, the mítos, the bini. Eh, me wí mítos, se bini, eh, e bu kumélu, ya, uwa se, lo, kubé, na pa, niska, ba le, se ké se me kubá. Na o, eh, u te, mítos, se bini, le beni, si, so, kumo ngamele, kobe ne, ne kala, zó, u buti no. Eh, i kubé, a, mítos, i, i kila ka kulu, ngaba yu ne, a ba tu, aba ngé, konye shda, eh, kubé, o, da le, o, bi kuma, ngana sigo, bi kuma. Eh, nési tu, a ba tu, eh, ena shudu, tamahelé té. U ba le yé, u buti, le mítos, eh, u buti, iya, ya, na seki, na wé. And, u ba kona, u kuku, o, o, aba kona, u buti, umte, o, kala, o, section seventy five, wa kuku, o, o, section seventy six. Now, o section seventy six of the constitution, u kuma u buti, these are ordinary deals, which are, are normally sent provinces. Because they directly affect the provinces. And, the mítos, e, e, si, zilela, e keze, e, na, na wey zingé ipunda. Se klané, o, ma yu xelo, three sections, seventy six of the constitution. Jéjé o, president, wa ité, a u kulu, le mítos, e, e, la. Eh, u ba le mi, u buti, o president, u buti kala u buti, eh, guna manda, a, a, aniwa yo, u ngomosha, aha fané. And, wa, wa reza ma reservation, ya thola u buti, in his letter, eh, o president, eh, of the country, stated that section six, capital letter A. Subsection seven B, and seven A, subsection seven B, and eight, A, subsection five B. Who confer substantial discretionary power to the millions. And this may well constitute an unprecedented integration of legislative authority, and such will be constitutionally infallible. While the president, he is in his letter, with concern to the speaker of the national assembly, that, eh, la ma kro, me kubéla, eje, na, kule mítos, e, e, be. Ova se giba nji. La i kola, le mítos, eh, process, tete, tete, eh, u buti, ba, ke, pe si wey, za, kù pa beni, le konsele. La ba, o, o president, he was in the distance, ilu ge lo la, o, jéjé ova nji, u buti section seventy nine, subsection one of the constitution. President, after having done all the processes, gave paré u buti, u boye no signa. Eh, ama be la, suddenly become the head, as a mítos, o, o, la, yé, rabá. So president, he has already said, no, ama ja ni gue, u beni, se ra, ta kula kula. Now, o president, esí esí, eh, eh, si, le, u rezi konsele u buti, eh, ama papeteri, which were held in other six seventeen. When you are substantial amendments, and in fact, after those amendments were made, it was important that, also you take the bill back for consultation. Because na ma, eh, de, de, ova nji, si, zó, si, zó, tu la, la, le mítos, e, e. O ba fané, le buti na, ne, ne, mbo, ne, zé, zonke, u buti, di kubé, di kuna, kune, o ba o, eh, u ba le mi, le, u buti, ne, zé, zonke. O president, wa i fi u buti ge, jéjé ova na, i se kù be gandi, eh, ya fané u buti, se kona, ma nyama papeteri, e, e. U buti, zé nozol u buti, ba yu, na o, ba si, around these two cases. Now, ta kumbu, eh, eh, president, ya thala na. Is a system that is called a failure. There is a concern, now we ask ourselves, but what is a failure, a failure? A failure use, the process, normally, the John Uchi, eh, it is mostly used in America. Where you have a situation where by, eh, if the section, in the wa, ke kado. Uma wel zé, na, we no, u mni gazi, well, let's say, we write, we write a song, and make an example, a pa tumtulu. Because, eh, ba yé, gilu buti, si kón, u buti, uma u mu, yu, eh, fané, itu laku, yé, zé, u buti, mesé, fané, le. U ba kona, u mu, yu, wa, wa rezi, zangafan, wa, u buti, aha be, u mni gazi. Because, u ba le mi, u buti, u rezi, u buti, interval, kambe na, u buti, ya, u buti, kuwa, u buti, u endu ama right, aha ne. So u ba le mi, u buti, eh, whatever song that you produce, suna u buti, when the show, u buti, na, we rezi, u buti, kuwa, u buti, we no, kambe na. U buti, zé, me, u kono, mu, yu, mu, yu, kulu, kulu la, kupra, kariwa, akumisa ni, na, kari. Na o, kulu, zwa, u buti, bu, mu, ta, no, kui, eh, u wa, u buti, u buti, zé, zé, itu laku. U luku, eh, o ba se, thola u buti, ge, yé, kwenze, u buti, u buti, a ba tu, gisébele, zé, ama kulu, aba kulu, aba dali. O da kona, sewa, kuwa, ngeni, be. Ika da, u mítos, yu, tu, u, u, yé, na, original, wa, kamonu, kona, u kona, u ta, be gèle, kona, eh, aha gua u buti. Eh, ebe, zé, zonke, u zé, gua, u buti, a pokéle, eh, a pokéle, wa, kemi, it comes in the form of rights. Na kona, ya thola u buti, depend u buti, u no, zá, zá, la. Now, first, the first challenge, we play, we finish, eh, eh, such as American failures. Ya thola, o, president, also raised a reservation, that the copyright amen, 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 eh, introduce copyright reception. Eh, kali, le, u buti, se, zulu, introduce a maximum, zanani. Eh, angé, zé, u buti, eh, u buti, i, zí, i, zí, de aha kula. Eh, as a result, a ba tu, u bo, kona, aba tu, mule, be gne, be, na, kuda, na o ba. Eh, o president, also, u buti, u ba le mi, u buti, jéjé ova se, se gèle, kui, vumele, no, zamagzo, ngamagzo, no, noke sisi, tamah international cities.
This is what the government, the other register as a member example. If I want to do some of them, I want to go on further, we are farmers who can be. If you move to a new little town, it is a break, it was the sample, we will take your family there. And everything is this, it's going is really the consent for children. Eh, it is like any other sample, I forget the. Who is the colleague, who band, failure, my member, fail, what can you spoke, the rule. Now, another thing is to deal with the protection of work and rights of others in the digital environment. The result, we would talk on the Google corner, you know, manager. Eh, because the technology generally advances us, we are in the fourth industrial revolution. Now, the quality of the picture, so I think that I see shy. It was good for the comply, no, chara chara eh eh, obviously, but now, obviously, I would try. Now, the panel of the city, the city, it was good to get it. If somebody did not mind, you know, about to, so we go on about the gas, eh, from Mercedes. If somebody, yeah, I'm always, it was good to sit in the cellar, with digital environment, the panel, the mobile, the. You may call me from all over the world, they were part of the. Eh, um, they also provide for standard contractual terms to empower others when negotiating contracts. And this would cause new phone, better results, in unfair contractual terms, that is left, it is a signing on the right. Now, Thomas, the best player, you know, we. Em, let me get ready, we will see, if we have a good, this last week, we will tell the. So I could buy, I'm a young man, let me, eh, who told you, we will see. Ah, one was, ah, I don't believe that. If somebody, yeah, for example, if you mean that, who you, you. Uh, we will call us, for the, the man, the support, we will see. About to be born, ah, about to die, go back, we will do, eh, um, legal, yes, we will find. Eh, well, very good, so, so, eh, I will find, I will find, I will find, I will find. Go back, we will come back to the band, ah, about the band, we will go back, we will be good there. What do you go back, for the, ah, about the. So, we will say, so, we will, the level, we will, we will, we will, we will, we will. We can, we can, we can, let it go, eh, yeah, about the, about sugar. Eh, the basis is, we will see, we will come, um, to, come, probably, go. We will come, for the, um, to, to, to. Now, we will say, so, we will, we will, we will, we will, about the, about the, to, to, to. Who goes, about the, we want, we will see, but so, eh, the, yeah, eh, we will, eh. It is a proposal, we will see, um, minister, we will, we will, eh, uh, unamakai clients, ah, office, who are parameters. Who will see, maybe, when we, we will, no, for city, ah, am a contract. The panel, we will go, we will see, about to be fair, oh, um, um, to, probably, um, legal, eh, when go, ah, um, to, to. But then, for two side, don't miss a move, it's here, no, compose, eh, yeah, sugar, we will, ah, ah, go, 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 about. For our mother, we will, about to be there. The panel, we will go, go, about, about, okay, let it, let it. Who are we for, um, to, also, so, change, you know, no, no, okay, let me, my, eh. So, we will say, so, we have to, we will say, that, no, we will see, we will go, we will see. About to say, eh, they go, they are, they are, they are, they are, about. Eh, then, I say, that, ah, contracts, eh, eh, the name, now, my contract, ah, my child, ah, my body, I'm basically, na, yo. Eh, it's good, the panel. Now, another thing, ah, ah, for me, so, eh, copyright amendment, please, is to introduce a recent right, right. This recent right, right, means that an artist could be attacked to a royalty when their original work is resold, commissioned. Oh, my, the way, come on, we will say, we do, eh, who distribute, eh, who die, eh. Don't tell, we are, for me, to, we will say, we are, for me, we will say, the, we will, we will. Push on, push on, in the form of royalties. So, for, um, to, ah, we are, ah, the, 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 the. Eh, the retail stores, you can, you see, now, the panel, we will go, we will see. Eh, um, several do, ah, for, eh, we are, okay, now. Now, eh, senior, this, eh, the, 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 the. When the, this, we will be, had, had, with, about, we will see, the, 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 eh, to, I would say, use, because, if they, dealing in a, ah. Exceptions which are, which are listed, who, oh, and put there, there are no, to the people, we will, these are the exceptions. In contrast, they use, eh, they are not said, eh, exception, you have, if you call, we will, we will, we will, we will, ah, acknowledge.
Over who the high gate, which I don't want to go to have, therefore I claim the copyright. I will, I will, I was to get a, or one who came copyright in that circumstance. Another proposed amendment in clause three of the bill, propose an amendment to section five of the act. By providing for ownership of copyright land under direction or control by the state. Also clause four of the bill propose an amendment to section six of the act. By providing for communication to the public of a new software. By wire, wireless, or wireless link, including internet. And making available to the public, aware in such a way that members of the public may access. That way from a place at a time individual to them by them. Now, the. Eh, um, several more. Communicate your life. Yeah, the good thing, the best skill that we did is always by good technology. Eh, this is developing a level. Eh, now. Now, when I'm. Who's who are gifts or imperative, who's who consume. Now, when I'm. We are. A funny, the good. But say, eh, we got to know my name. No, my thing that was good. I'm okay. Close five, which is with the sharing of royalties regarding literary and musical work. Eh, close five, it will be proposing section of a new section, which is six, capital letter A. Specifically providing for royalty sharing after assignment of copyright to the literary or musical work. Or in the order of the literary or musical work, authorize another, we do any of the acts contemplated in section C. Now, close five, no, propose the routine. Eh, um, several is it? Um, do, no, um, yeah, um, see me. Where say, um, see me, do I can be more, 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 see me, me. When say, um, see me, see you, no, no. Also, when the land down, the good. But we never want to see the water, so move that, and then I'm a royalties, I come to the. So, um, there's a. Eh, value part, you can see some marketing, I commit. For example, um, to. Eh, um, value, well, go, oh, the, ah, the, like, too.
I am creative now. The leader should not be confused with the people who are not creative. They are not the same people. They are not responsible for the actions of the artists. They are not responsible for the actions of the artists. They are not the same people. If they are not, it will be a shame. It will be a shame to them. They are not the same people. See, we are not comfortable and we are frustrated against the other people. It is about the community, it is about the artists. It is about the involvement. The leaders should not be like that. They are not the same people. 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 The leaders should not be like that.
I don't think I can explain it. You think you want to agree? Come to address it from the language that we can all understand. Because I can see that I don't want anything from you. So now, come let me try to change. I have said this before, you then say you are not a relevant group. It's fine. While addressing here, as we put together a room, while addressing here, while not creating, while addressing here because yourself, you are a single group. And if you are... You are only giving us this. You are only giving us this. Because it is a matter that is ongoing, it is a matter of high importance. It is happening tomorrow, not yesterday, not next week. It is happening tomorrow. And what I say, you must acknowledge that we are not issues. We are here right now, we are honored to our invitation, we are here right now. We are interested in doing our best. But right now, a matter of high importance is that non-restrict level that is happening tomorrow. And you must not allow this program to proceed. While you are saying the program is not important, the program is indeed important to others. But what I say is that this program must be put on hold until the matters of tomorrow. It is a matter of tomorrow. This program has to sit. They are not interested to sit. The others are just going to stand. They are standing but not yet now. Understand? This program must be put until the end of the minute that is here. If she is not here, this program is not proceeding. Because yourself, you are not, you are a single group, while not frustrating you guys. No, while not creating, as it is going to be, you are not artists. You want to understand that, it is not them that are going to do that. So now, I think frustrating is not something that... It is not even going to teach you. It does not even teach you because you are a single group to the artists. And if you are a single group that you are, you must allow us to stop this program right now. So it is not like that they have no problem, it is not like they have no problem. It is more than that.
Eh, San Bonan. Eh, we are not going to talk about that. This time around, it is not easy. Eh, but when we are going to do this, we are not going to tell you to go to a meeting. We are going to talk about artists. First, you are going to send the community, and we are going to send the artists to the country. The problem is that we are not going to talk about it. We are not going to make a comment in Moscow. If we are not going to do it, we are not going to do it. Because we are alone, we are alone. We are not going to talk about it. If we are not going to do it, we are not going to do it. We are not going to do it. When we are going to do it, we are not going to do it. But if we are going to do it, we are not going to do it. We are not going to do it. We are not going to do it. We are very concerned about it. So, I am going to talk about it. As far as we are concerned, the problem is that we are not going to do it. It is not easy. It is hard.
Eh. Oh, what's up? Eh, the senior manager of the company is going to leave. So, eh, it is not easy. One, two, it is not easy. It is not easy to do it.
San Bonan. I am not afraid. Eh, the company is not going to do it. We are not going to talk about it. That is why I am afraid. Eh. I am not going to do it. I am not going to do it. We are not going to do it. We are not going to do it. Day one, day two, we are not going to do it. 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 Here is the story. We are going to do it. We are not going to do it. We are not going to do it. So, we are not standard, not standard. We are not going to do it. 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 The people are going to do it. In the end, we are not going to do it. 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 I am not going to do it. The artists that want to do it now. Where is where is going to do it now? If you go to sit there, you will be... You will be in trouble. They are going to do it. I am not going to do it. They are going to do it. We are not going to do it. I am not going to do it. We are 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 not going to do it. It is not easy. We are not going to do it. We are not going to do it. We are not going to do it. I am not going to do it. We are 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 not going to do it. I am not going to do it. I am not going to do it. I am not going to do it. Oh, we are not going to do it. We are not going to do it. We are not going to do it. Oh, you are not going to do it. We are not going to do it. We are not going to do it. But we are going to do it. We are not 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 going to do it. We are artists here. We are not going to do it. We are not going to do it. And we are not going to do it. We are not going to do it. It is not easy for you to do it. You are not busy. We are not going to do it. 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 We are not going to do it.
Uh, I am going to talk about it. Go to again. When the leaders, the leaders who are not going to do it. Eh, the company is going to do it. Eh, I am going to talk about it. I am going to talk about it. Eh, we are not going to do it. Yes. Eh, I am going to talk about it. I am going to talk about it. Eh. We are not going to do it. It is not easy. We are not artists. We are not going to do it. That is not good. It is not good. I am not going to do it. It is not good. I am not going to do it. We are not going to do it. We are not going to do it. We are not going to do it. It is not easy. We are not going to do it. 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 Then we are not going to do it. It is not easy. Eh, we are not going to do it. It is not easy. We are not going to do it. It is not easy. It is not easy. We are not going to do it. It is not easy. We are not going to do it. We are not going to do it. I am not going to do it. We are 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 not going to do it. I mean, no way. I mean, no way to you. Because we are not going to do it. 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 Yeah.
San Bonan. Eh, the company is not going to do it. It is not easy. Eh, it is not easy. I am not going to do it. I am not going to do it. I am not going to do it. Eh, it is not easy. We are not going to do it. Eh, it is not easy. It is hard. Yeah. And the leaders are not going to do it. We are not going to do it. It is not easy. We are not going to do it. If you are the M C, or if you are the department, you are not going to do it. We are not going to do it. We are not going to do it. For this reason, we are not going to do it. 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 That is made with our deadbed. If I am not going to do it. Yeah. But if you are going to do it now, you are not going to do it. You are not doing it. It is the fact that we are to respect it. We are not going to do it. Yeah. For instance, in 2024, we need these people to do it. About site that is here. It is not going to do it. But for example, the very same people who are going to vote. Also, the leaders are going to do it. They are going to do it. They are going to do it. But I am not going to do it. It is right in the back of my mind. Yeah. Because it is unacceptable. Yeah. I am not going to do it. And I am not going to do it. Yeah. We are not going to do it. 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 Everything I do is for the 90,002 artists. I am not going to do it. All those people are artists. Why don't you go to the party? Why are you not going to do it? Why are you not going to do it? You are not going to do it. That is the plan. That is the plan. That is not easy. The artists. I respect it. I am not going to do it. Because it is very important. It is not easy. It is not the artists. I understand. But look at the situation. There are the events. That is million. I am not going to do it. Just here. Yeah. If you do it, it is not easy. For you to do it. Then you do it. Because you are not going to do it. So, that is the reason. This is very important. Who says Amanda, who Amanda is the leader? As a progress of the people. They have to come and respect the people. Because they are not going to do it. They are not going to do it. Yeah. The company is not only quick. The company is not going to do it. I am going to do it. You are not going to do it. You are not going to do it. The party is not going to do it. By a sign. About sign. Yeah. Introduce myself as a sign. That is not easy. That is A N C. That is a guy who can construct it. Just come to us. You can be the leader. You are not going to do it. Yeah. So, I am an officer. So, I am going to do it. Who can do it? Something like this. I am going to do it. The events are going to be. The event is not easy. We are not going to do it. We are not going to do it. And the events are not easy. By a boot. You can see, it is too much power. Yeah. We are too much power. We are not going to do it. We are not going to do it. Of course, nothing to do. Because of connection. Yeah. Because we are not going to do it. Yeah. We are all equal. We are not going to do it. Yeah. I'm speaking the truth, Bapet. I'm speaking the truth and not accusing anyone. Yeah. The decision is not effective. Who says that? You are not going to do it. You are not going to do it. You are not good. You are not good. That is the sentence. We are not going to do it. Yeah. We are not going to do it. Who says that? It is not full of respect. The company is not going to do it. We are not going to do it. Yeah. You are not going to do it. We are not going to do it. Because it is not easy. Even now, we are bored of it. It is unacceptable. Yeah. We are not going to do it. We are not going to do it. Because we are not going to do it. But the problem is not easy. Who M C with? Who share the company? We are not going to do it. Even my name is right there, but I don't know how to do it. Yeah. So, you are not going to do it. So, you are not going to do it.
Okay. No, I, I, I think we are not a six hundred. It is not easy to study. And the class, we are... We are not going to do it. 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 I am not going to do it. These are the people who are not going to do it. It is not the artists or the creative who are improving. It is not the people who are improving. It is not good. It is not good. And they make time to be part of my activity. Because we are not going to do it. We talk about the event. We are not going to do it. I think if I say the message, it is... When the event is... It is... Even if it is not... If I do it, I am not going to do it. That is not easy. So. It is not easy. We are not going to do it. 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 I am not going to do it. We are 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 not going to do it. I am not going to do it. We are not going to do it. We are not going to do it. I am not going to do it. We are not going to do it. But it is not good. We are not going to do it. We are not going to do it. We are not going to do it. I am not going to do it. We are not going to do it. We are not going to do it. So, so, we are not going to do it. We are not going to do it. The department is not going to do it. It is not good. It is not good. Whether we are M C, we are not going to do it. So that... You do not understand that my issues were important. They are going to do it. I am not going to do it. You are not going to do it. You are not going to do it. It is not good. From the beginning, they are not going to do it. Ten, twenty minutes. So, the leaders are going to do it. Eh, we are not going to do it. It looks like that because seemingly we might not be able to proceed as expected. The public theory. Based on the circumstances. Eh. If we are not any... The company is not going to do it. It would be ideal if we were to do it. In the year, we take this from them. So, it is big text. Who is... We are not going to do it. We are not going to do it. No, that's not it. The leaders are not going to do it. They are not going to do it.
Thank you. Yeah. I am sorry. I am sorry. I think I'm going to do it. It is... Thank you.
I'd like to give my in all the different countries. We would thank you for your visit. Thank you very much. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. I think it is in the background of the I think that I'm not interested in this. It was in then I'm here. Yeah. It is also if I didn't in I'd like to this is a lot of people I mean this is a very I just excuse me. So can have a presentation. And we also if I didn't I I see several actually there okay well because it's everything. It's it because I'm sorry it's time for as it does not just I you definitely in the time I thought we I want to but he I tell but also he that's I love I do I request about the something if you want to get my hey I'm sorry which means yes and yeah it's my name they we but in fact we I thought did it's I but I I I because part of yeah okay but it's like that is uh I don't know what I should like so yeah I think it's baby they very good station is you it but I don't we actually they but you have to be straight and they are they don't be wrong time I must take the really thing I don't you say this you I think that that's my I see I but I see the style should be that I see I I think it's I didn't remember I this is very important so that should be very thank you for it's made it by me and speed that is definitely I find everyone we we even better it is where I can probably you but well that's probably probably I guess that that not not it's like it is that can be what you want is to be that you have to eat three and be if you see why if you can see that the issue because why you have really careful and they have seen the in their I will please it I would be proud of the thought of the thing is that we spend we because I wish I like to be large and things now which was was in the same place and was trying as big people for I would be able to be but I would be proud of my son okay I love very I think actually in my if I can it I why I don't do I would I to be sure they stay by I I think I wish I have a I saw you on that please when I was I get it in if you have it gets great if this I I like it but I think it quite I I think it's very I is that I can reach and it is so I I I this we have to pay the big deal with the intention of this and yeah it is by the big confusion exactly because this part of the last thing and for that is from the story I and that the history because we we possibly be inside and because each other the probability of us will be about and certainly we is but it's big by but I mean the definitely touch that's a probably like I said on slide I don't know maybe this again this is usually uh I don't see any group that would be interesting for but I it is and maybe maybe it's much different I maybe it I it's same as the but I no I mean I I mean I want I I I I I think I say it's more than it is I I I I I can put that's it that's it that's I think I can buy that I think I I thought that you I want I I I want to very I want to it and this the most definitely is something that it's and I tell to I think they are they say by that my friend they 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 it but it meant they see even taking part I think they so they like me being that's what they want which we are high in the world when so thanks for that they they reach the end in the story I just to get it is I think I don't I I don't miss it's as soon as that is very good for the process to it's it gives us my attention as I see camera between that[746.16] eh here's this tier One of the very The It is A book season That is They told me that Um Yeah And also And then with the last Yeah And That's We can And what's one that compares? It's But Well You I am Not so In Also Now No It's In I love it Mas Away Station Oh Yes Yes I That they Can I feel like When Ah What I Which is this Think Oh Hey Oh Is Yeah What The game Okay No That's As we leave the bay It's It's Oh Then Let's Go Get